We ready to roll?
We're ready to roll.
Okay. We're a minute ahead, that's okay. We'd like to welcome everybody out to our planning commission meeting and glad you could make it. And we will start off with a pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Sheldon and reverence by Commissioner Amanda.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we are very thankful to be gathered here tonight to be able to discuss the needs of our city and we're grateful for the beautiful weather that we've had, we're grateful for the community that we live in and for the friendships and for all of the good people that serve on our behalf. We're grateful for this country that we live in, for all of the freedoms and blessings that we enjoy and we ask that thou would please help us to live worthy of those blessings. We ask that thou would please help us to be open-minded tonight, be able to listen to the concerns that are brought before us and to make decisions based on wisdom and truth. We ask that thou would please watch over our families and loved ones while we are away and that we will return home in safety. Again, we thank thee for all of our many blessings and we say these things in the name of thy beloved Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Okay, the first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from August 12th, 2021. Both of you have an opportunity to go through those and...
Yes.
Okay. Any changes that, or I shouldn't say changes, but amendments or corrections?
I didn't notice any.
That being stated, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from August 12th.
A motion that we approve the planning commission minutes for August 12th, 2021.
Okay, there's a, a motion from Commissioner Prince for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. Now to item number 3A, a public, this is a public hearing in consideration for a conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling unit, ADU. It's located at 5342 West, 3550 South for James and Robert Rasmussen. Is, is there a representative here? James?
I'm Robert.
Oh, your other names?
Okay. This is our mother Esther.
Okay.
With the residence.
You're gonna be the lucky winner, huh? Do you want to approach and state your name and your address and we'll just ask you some questions? Either, both or either one of you, it doesn't matter.
Name, Robert Rasmussen. Address is 5342 West, 3550 South, Hooper.
James Rasmussen, I'm his brother and I live at 5342 West, 35.
Name, Robert Rasmussen. Address is 5342 West, 3550 South.
We just heard that.
Yeah.
James Rasmussen, brother. 5342 West, 35. That was weird.
It's like a Milli Vanilli moment when we found out they really were the ones.
Blame it on the room.
I think we're good now.
Thank you. So that's the Quell Meadow subdivision, is that right? Is that what it's called?
Yeah.
Okay, Nielsen Homes. Do you commissioners have any questions for the Rasmessens? Just, you know, I like these, I think it's a great, great opportunity for us here in the city to participate in these ADUs.
So this thing is 960 square feet, what was the limit?
960, yeah.
960.
So the entranceway is gonna be on the west side, right?
Yes.
You're property, okay, perfect. And I don't have any other questions. So, do you have any questions for us?
Not really.
Okay. You just want them to hurry and build it so you got a place to live, right?
Yeah.
You sure you can watch your mom back there?
I'm older. So I'm upstairs, Jimmy's downstairs.
Oh nice.
She's just gonna be in the back, they had passed away, so it'll be nice to have mom close to home.
Yeah, that's great.
Where is your parking gonna be at? I mean, I know you said that was on the west side, right? Are you putting in a...
It was like there was a garage attached to it.
A garage, okay.
Yeah.
Looks nice, I like the picture of it too, so. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
This being a, a public meeting, is there anybody that received a letter that's within 600 feet and has any comments or concerns that they would like to come forward? Okay? If not, then we'll bring it back to the commission. You have any comments or concerns?
Like I said, I think that's, we added this to our city regulations to be able to have these, so I think it's good we're getting some.
I do too.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the ADUA located at 5342 West, 3550 South for James and Robert Rasmussen.
I will, um, what did I word this? Propose we approve the ADU located at 5342 West, 3550 South for James and Robert Rasmussen.
Okay, so consideration for approval, right?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a, a motion for consideration.
Since it's a conditional use permit, you guys go ahead and approve it.
Oh, okay.
That's what, yeah, so you can just move to approve the conditional use permit.
Thank you. So we have a motion for approval from Commissioner Sheldon. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion has passed. Next on the agenda is a public hearing in consideration for a conditional use permit for an access, an accessory dwelling unit located at 4747 South, 5900 West for David and Cara Osere, is that correct?
Good, good.
And we have representatives here, state your name and, names and your address.
Cara Osere, our address is 4747 South, 5900 West.
I'm David Osere, I live at the same address.
Nice. Does the commission have any questions? Were you the ones that came in and made it bigger?
Oh yeah, you guys totally called it. We went out and we mapped that 700 whatever and we were like, oh this will never work.
I think it was you saying, are you sure you don't want that bigger?
Yeah. And I went after him and said, yeah, I want that bigger.
You were right.
That's good. Well, we're glad you're taking advantage of that. Anyway, I don't have any questions or, or concerns, so...
No, I thought, I just thought it was, well, I guess you gotta turn it back over to us, I don't know, do you?
No, go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay, I just thought it was cool that I noticed you guys were going through rubber buildings, like to do more of a pole barn structure rather than just to build.
Because it used to be attached, right? The garage was attached?
Yes, correct, was attached, now we've moved it attached.
Okay.
I didn't even know you could do that and so I kinda researched a little bit about it and they really built some nice things. I saw some really cool ones.
Yeah, and it's funny, after going with them, now I start seeing them and I see them as homes, not just garages.
Yeah, I, I'd like to come see it when you guys get it done and just see what it looks like, but...
We'll put on tour.
Okay, you should.
And your daughter was living there, right?
Yes.
Yeah, you kinda got me thinking about doing the same thing because I have a daughter that's getting ready, cause she goes to college, she's trying to get out on her own, but it's hard to find anything in that price range right now, so I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. This being a public meeting, is there anybody from the community that has a comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and enter, intend a motion for approval of conditional use permit for this ADUA located at 4747 South, 5900 West.
A motion that we approve the conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling unit located at 4747 South, 5900 West for David and Cara Osere.
Okay, we have a motion for approval from Commissioner Prince, do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing in consideration for a conditional use permit for a fence extension from six foot to eight foot located at 5020 West, excuse me, 5020 South, 5050 West for Andre Radar and Olatunde Foster. I hope I said that right.
Yeah.
Did I? Go ahead, state your name and your address.
My name is Andre Radar and I'm at 5020 South, 5050 West, Hooper.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for Mr. Radar, is it Radar, right?
Radar.
Radar, okay.
Yeah.
We have a, we have a, that's your home right there on the, right about in the middle, is correct?
Yeah, we had that field right next to it on the side, yeah.
So you're talking the back fence there, okay.
Is that, sorry?
Go, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna ask, is the, what, what was the reason to move from six feet to eight feet?
Basically, it's more or less like a privacy issue, just like the world can see in our backyard and we can see in theirs and right around the corner I seen a fence, I'm like, oh wow, why couldn't we have a fence like that? Because it's just, they can't, you know, you can still see, but you just can't see everything in there, you know?
Yeah.
You walk down, that's pretty much how ours sits with a six foot fence, so.
Yeah.
Well, I would assume since there's not a neighbor really that it's affecting, nobody really had an issue with it, so I don't, I don't see anything concerning about doing that.
Yeah, me neither.
I would do it, I would, I would put an eight foot fence over a six foot fence, I'd put a 10 foot fence.
Me too, 10 foot. Do you have any questions for us?
Uh, no sir.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
This being a public meeting, are there any individuals in the vicinity from the community that have any questions or concerns they'd like to approach? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I think we were just talking with Brandon ahead of time about, like, we don't know if your subdivision has any...
CCNRs.
CCNRs that would prevent you or, you know, people that might complain about it after the fact, but as far as the city's concerned, I think that this was their opportunity to do that, so I think that's a bit of it.
Yeah.
That discussion, we, I will entertain a motion or, for approval for a conditional use permit for a fence extension from six to eight foot at 5020 South, 5050 West.
I will motion that we give approval for the conditional use permit of the eight foot tall fence located at 5020 South, 5050 West.
We have a motion of approval from Commissioner Greener, do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Commissioner Prince, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing in consideration for a conditional use permit for an oversized structure of 1900 square feet located at 5191 South, 5050 West for Paul Bone. Hopefully I said that correctly. Is there a representative, Mr. Bone?
Yeah.
Go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Eric Anderson and I'm the builder. I live at 4357 South, 4300 West in West Haven. I'm here on behalf of Paul Bone at 5191 South, 5950 West. Who's home with colder, I can't say.
Oh.
I just assumed, no.
Tell them thanks for not coming.
Yeah.
My sister's next door.
The purpose of building this is to be able to house his travel trailer and two extra vehicles so that we don't have them on the street or in the garage in front of the house just to clean up things and make it look a little bit better.
Right.
He did have one other question for me to ask while I was here. We have a 1900 square feet, he was wanting to know if he could actually go to 2400 square feet for the sole fact, so he'd have more room to tell you how to have a shop or stuff or lawn and yard storage and what have you, but that would require me to actually have some other plans submitted, it's not a problem, I just thought I'd bring it up while he asked.
Just procedurally with that, if, if, if you did, just procedurally speaking, if you wanted to ask for that different size, we would have to renotice and re-advertise because it was advertised for the 1920 and it could be somewhere in that issue.
Let's just go ahead and deal with what we've got, then that's all.
Okay.
And if we go ahead and approve it and they change their mind, they still can come back and just like alter.
Yeah, yeah, they just make another application, we just wanna make sure the notice maps is where you're approving.
Okay.
Okay.
And if he decides to do that, I'll actually have him come back and do it, but for right now, I just assume stick with what we've already got, because it's already been submitted.
Okay.
Like, like I told them in the last, in the meet, last meeting they were at, you always wanna go bigger?
Yes. Any other questions?
I've got a couple of questions. So there's no electricity or plumbing at this time?
No electricity or plumbing to it, it's basically just for storage for whatever right now. If he decides to do that down the road, he'd actually have to...
Okay.
Put in for extras or do whatever at that point in time.
That's another recommendation, I mean, he might want a stub for it right now, you know, put it on the, so, okay, but that does require a, a separate...
Correct.
Okay.
They, they, they just have to come in and make sure that they set it up with the inspectors.
Yeah.
Are they accessing it on the south side?
They will be accessing it from the south side, yes. And there is already a gate there.
Okay. Any other questions? Amanda will have one in a second, see, I might want to just stay there. That's a joke, I'm just teasing.
Yeah, it's probably accurate. I don't, I don't see anything, I don't see any issues with it.
I have two other things that I'd like to mention.
Okay.
As a builder, I deal with hundreds of cities and lots of counties. Your, your people here in the office and your inspectors are marvelous. I'm not a computer literate guy, I have a hard time doing that kind of stuff. They're more than helpful and they do an exceptional job. I just wanna know that the people you have on staff, they keep me happy.
Good, that's great to hear, that's good to hear.
They, they don't get a good pat on the back, I can't bring them a tip, I can't give them cookies because that's bribery, so I just wanted to make sure somebody needed their doing a good job.
We'll give them some cookies for you.
Yeah, that's something.
Thank you, appreciate that. This being a public meeting, is there anybody in the audience that needs to make a comment or would like to make a comment regarding this structure? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission. I'd like to entertain a motion for considerate, approval for consideration, approval for a conditional use permit for an oversized structure of 1920 square feet located at 5191 South, 5050 West.
It's actually 5950 West.
It's 59?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. 5950 West.
Okay, I'll motion that we approve the conditional use permit for the oversized structure located at 5191 South, 5050 West for Paul Bone.
Did you just say 5050 West?
Yeah.
Did I? 5950, I don't know, I tried to write it down, but my pen is not working. Modified out to say 5950 West.
Perfect.
Okay.
We have a motion from Commissioner Prince, do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes. The next item on our agenda is a discussion on requesting modifying the R2 frontage requirements to the city council. And at this time, I believe Commissioner Greener has a presentation for us, is that correct? Okay.
So this is the, kind of a breakout of the existing table, which is table 10 dash 2B dash 3. And the way that, this is a subsection of it, right, the full table has more info on it, but, but basically on here, what we're proposing, we, the city do, is change the frontage on R2 from the current 100 foot to 130 feet. And I left that bottom interior side property line, that's blank, I think that, you know, and setback there too, those might be things we wanna look at later. I feel like right now, let's focus on the 130 to kinda have our thoughts of addressing those possibly in the future as well. Go to the next slide. So this is pulled right out of the survey number two for the Hooper general plan. On here, that line in blue, which is the second most ranked or picked or chosen response from the people of the city, states that they are interested in having the minimum frontage increased to 150. Maybe increase isn't the correct ver- wordage, but having that be the minimum frontage. So we have some direct input from the citizens of Hooper that seem to indicate that they support something like this. And go to the next slide. So then the next question is, well, why not 150 foot frontage if that's what the survey said? So in some discussions that we'd had before, it was kinda brought up that if we did 150 foot on R2, that might limit the depth of those lots to only 134 foot deep as like the minimum that people would get, which of course, that's what would happen as often as developers could do. So we wanted the depth of them to be a little bit deeper to give people, you know, a little more bigger backyard and that sort of thing. So the 150 foot frontage kinda falls right into that middle of the 100 foot for R3 and 150 for R1. Go to the next slide. This is my little saying here, they say good fences make good neighbors, but I think a little distance does too. So I am a firm believer that when you're right on top of your neighbor, you know, that kind of can lead to a little bit more bad feelings as opposed to if you had some distance between ya. And like, is that, good fences, good tall fences make good neighbors, would you be right?
Yeah.
Okay, next slide. So here's a couple of examples of things right here in Hooper, right? Up the street and down the street from where we are at right now. So on the left, we have, both of these are R2 developments. The one on the left, the top left house is actually Nate Platts, the commissioner here on the planning commission, that's his home. That subdivision, all of those, the frontage in all those lots is at least 150 feet. The one on the right there is just a typical, you know, what an R2 subdivision would look like, kinda those long, deep, skinny lots. And I mean, I've, I've heard people in the past talk about how R1, you get a lot of weeds and stuff in the back, people, you know, but as you can see, those R2s, they're, those long skinny R2 lots, they're prone to that just as well. So by having those be a little bit more spread out, you can get a little bit more distance between the houses and not have all that as much ground in the back that can just be weeds. So I have marked on there too, the average distance between the houses in Nate's neighborhood is 70 feet and the average distance in the other is 33 feet. And I mean, you can, even at 33 feet, those are, they look a little bit tighter and in reality, based on the initial table from the, the first slide, those houses could be as few as 10 feet apart. So that's something to, to keep in mind too. So, next slide. So another point here is houses are getting larger. Here's a few houses right here in Hooper as well. The one on the left is Jared's, our city public works director. So you see his house there, 90 feet across? That would barely fit on the current R2 because he would only have the five feet on each side. So like, do you want the house that big on the R2 or do you wanna have R2 be a little bit bigger to fit a house like that? The next house is in my neighborhood, I don't remember exactly what it is, 110-ish or something like that down at the bottom there, next to the top. So, so that one also would not fit on R2 lot. So leaving these people to only be able to build these houses on R1. Next slide. So one on the left there is my house, 105 feet. I've kinda mentioned before how when I was looking to build this house, I was looking in Nate's neighborhood, it was the only one available that would fit a house that size in, in the R2. So I had to move to R1 to be able to, you know, because I wasn't able to get a house built in there. So I had to go to R1. This R1 is technically in Hooper, but in the Davis side, I think it's 116 feet, obviously built on R1 because that's really the only way, where that, place that would fit. So the idea on these is just showing that, you know, if we had this larger frontage on the R2s, it would give people with these type of houses a little bit more options of where they could build because they would be able to fit them onto R2s. Maybe they have a bigger home, but they don't want a full acre. Next slide. Here is another question pulled right from the survey, I believe this was question number five. It says, you know, what are the attributes of Hooper that are, you know, what is Hooper to you or whatever it says up there? So which words best describe Hooper as well? Select all that apply or select up your top three. So the number one by far is rural. So what does that mean to you? To me, that is where the city maintains an open feel. By increasing the R2, the R2 frontage to 130 feet, it'll help the city keep kinda that same feel that the R1 has. So if you're driving through a neighborhood and you're looking at it right now, if it's R2 or R3, you can't really tell as you're driving through the neighborhood. You don't know how deep the lot is, you just see that 100 feet up front, the houses kinda feel like they're on top of each other. And if we increased the R2 to 130 feet, then as people move through those neighborhoods, they might not know if it's R1 or R2 and help kinda keep that rural feel of that Hooper has. Okay, next slide. So here's a couple examples, again, the one on the left there is, both of these are R2. The left is just right to the east of us, those two R2 lots. I think though, that's probably about 20 feet apart, those two houses are. And then once again, the one there on the right is in the street next to Nate Platts' house, you know, about 70 feet apart on those houses there. So you can just kinda get a feel for how much more open that makes the, the neighborhood feel. Next slide. So a, a good question would be, would this cause additional cost to the city as far as maintenance of the, the roads? Because we'd have less, potentially less roads per, per mile of city road. So, question, does this less house density equal more maintenance cost? The answer is no. The, the road maintenance fund is based on the amount of linear miles of roadway. It does not matter if there are 100 houses per mile or one, no additional road maintenance cost to the city. Next slide. So this is kinda just a breakdown of that, the kinda points that we've covered throughout the, the slides. And once again, I've left the interior side property line and, you know, maybe at some point we'd look at the, the setback as well, but that's kinda the breakdown of my thoughts on this and we can discuss.
Good job, that was great. Now this, um, I'm, I'm in favor, I think it's great. I do like a little more open feel. There's one concern I have, I know of two people right now that have half, or acre next to them that they wanna develop sometime, so if we had some kind of verbiage where...
Some sort of conditional use or something like that.
If it's a one, one or two Z, you know, because I'd hate to single them out, but like on new development, I, I think this is a great idea.
Yeah, I think it would be smart to be able to have some sort of verbiage in there to address, you know, especially if you're breaking off for a family member or something like that, then yeah, I, I think that we, and obviously Brandon's the lawyer, but...
Well, yeah, and I mean, anything that's already, I mean, I could imagine in, in already subdivided development, I mean, you wouldn't, you wouldn't wanna carve out an exception because like you said, if you got a lot sitting there, I mean, you didn't take away their good, put a house on it.
Yeah, this would definitely be on, you know, this would be on subdivisions being put in for development. Everything already would be grandfathered in.
So I think you, I think you could carve out exceptions for that concern, but it's definitely one you'd want to.
Yeah.
Do you think, you know, because I know we talked about, you brought up, you know, property that's at the back of these long narrow lots, kind of turning into weeds and things like that, where that property would now be kind of on the side instead. Do you think there would be any concern with that at all of not being maintained because there's more this way to, I'm just gonna be honest and say when we bought our house, I was like, I want as little of a front yard as possible because people can't see what I'm not taking care of in the backyard. But, you know, I always want my front yard, but my backyard doesn't get as often. So I'm just, I'm probably just lazy, not lazy, busy, that's all I'm saying, it's like...
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's a, it's a valid concern, but I, in, in my opinion, my experience and especially like, you know, we have two streets right here to look at and have a good representation from those. And all those lots are very well maintained and having that additional space on the side, I mean, it, it's a little bit more grass potentially, but once again, a lot of times people are putting larger houses on them anyway. I mean, it, it's a little bit more grass potentially, but once again, a lot of times people are putting larger houses on them anyway, and so it... In my opinion, in my experience, doesn't necessarily matter how big the lot is.
I agree with you.
People will, will or won't maintain it.
Right. I think it's a good compromise, I know that there is, there are some people that would like to see, you know, some R-two lots in Hooker, and I think the concern is, how do we keep that rural feel, and I think this is a good compromise between those two themes, like increasing that footage to give it a more open feel. I like the idea, I'm just trying to, I always try to think of both sides of it, so.
Any other comments? This being a public meeting, would, is there any comments from any of you in the audience that you'd like to make? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the commission, uh, we're not gonna push this up to the city council, we just wanted to get a conversation going at a later date, this will, um, hit the city council, but not at this time. We short two commissioners and we want their input as well. Any other comments?
Good job Sheldon, I thought it was a good...
That was good, you did a great job Sheldon, and you used the survey, I really liked that because you pulled what the citizens wanted, this, this goes right in.
I, I think that, you know, we've all been to meetings and had citizens tell us over and over and over, you know, opposed to O-two, R-two development, and I think that, given this option, that there wouldn't be as much opposition to R-two if we had... I feel like it's a compromise that people could give me.
I do too, and I agree with Bryce, I think it's great, I think that survey holds a lot of weight because that's what the community is telling us, and so the more we can do to implement some of those desires, I think then we're doing what we're supposed to be, and they'll feel, people will feel like they're being listened to, I think that's really important, so.
Thank you, wanna thank all of you for coming tonight, and good luck on your projects. Um, so I'll entertain a motion for...
Are there any citizen comments?
Oh. Are there any other citizen comments that any of you'd like to make? Seeing, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for an adjournment.
I will motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
That motion is passed, thank you.
I don't owe you a new microphone, dude.
What's that again?
I don't owe you a new microphone.
No, I didn't, I think he broke it last time.
You Jesus.
Y'all have beauty.
Thank you as well.
That was exactly my concern, I wouldn't throw that up about bothering anyone.
Oh yeah.
I have some in my neighborhood, all of them that are, I mean...
Mirrors.